Second to sit down. Hello, hello. Okay. Hi, everybody. Please take a seat. Thank you so much for being here at the special meeting of members. I know it's a little warm in here, so please bear with us. That is unfortunately not really something we can do anything about. But we will do our best to get get through together. My name is Claire Seaton. I am the Secretary of AMES Board, and I would just like to kick us off by, okay, gotcha. Thank you. I will use my theater training and project. Can everyone in the back hear me? And can, am I blowing out the ears of people on Zoom? I apologize. To my right is Rhonda Snipes. She is the President of this board and our fearless leader at this, at this time. We have Jim Thorne, another wonderful board member who has been serving as long as I have since October 2021. And Richard Ostrom Ball, who I will say more words about later, but who is one of the county appointees to the board and has been an incredible help in this time as well. And thank you for anybody who can't hear me, just, just, just pop your hand up and, and we'll all remember to project again. Thank you. Big thanks also to Kathy Overton for doing the Zoom wrangling and all of this. Thank you so much. And just a note on kind of the proceedings. Kathy, are you able to pull up the slides? In terms of how this is all going to go, we will have an address from the President, a update on communications and membership things from me, some updates on finances from Richard, and also some updates on the lease goings on for AIM right now. We'll have a time for Q and A, and please, when that happens, please come to the microphone so that folks on Zoom can also hear you. This meeting, speaking of Zoom, is being recorded, so please be advised of that, and there will be a transcription of the proceedings available as well. A Q and A will be 30 minutes, and I will have my, my fun little timer going for two minutes for each person's statement or question. So thank you so much for being willing to keep it to two minutes because we want to be able to give everybody a chance to raise their voice. We will then have a couple of votes, including a vote of confidence and or no confidence, and I will explain more about that when we get to that after the Q and A. And we'll also have some notes on opportunities to get further involved with keeping him going and including a opportunity to be a producer's rep if that interests you. And then we'll be done. And a note, this building closes at 10:00, so we have a hard out for this meeting at 9:00. So, because we need to pack up and be able to turn the lights off. So thank you for being here and for being with AIM in this time. It's casually, I will say cuckoo bananas. Thank you for your patience and your grace. I just so appreciate you all. And yeah, that's all. Say for now, Rhonda.
Yes, round of applause for Claire for laying it out. Yes. All right. So I would also just like to send a special thanks to those members who volunteered to really come and help us get things set up and organized. So thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Jackie. Thank you, Linda. Absolutely. All right. And as Claire stated, my name is Rhonda Snipes. I am the President of Arlington Independent Media for now, and we're here for some very serious conversations, and I don't take it lightly. So this board has stepped up and has injected themselves into numerous staff processes. Those skill sets and talents and expertise that we thought we buried, we had to pull those back up and resurrect them. And also, just, we've come with a heart and with a passion to really just be here for AIM and to see that we do all we can to make sure that AIM stays alive. And that is also representing the members and the voice of the members. So you called for a special meeting, and we were delighted to actually go into action with this special meeting. First update that we're going to discuss is the staff and contractors update. So on March the 18th, the board was made aware that the staff, the entire staff for AIM had been terminated. On March the 19th, the board made a decision and the President, that was me, sent a letter to the CEO of Arlington Independent Media, and it was a letter of termination. So as of March 19th, the staff had been terminated. In addition to the CEO termination letter, there was also a letter sent out to the staff just to explain, we understand that thi- this was hard for everyone, and we're doing everything that we can to really turn things around and a- address where those challenges occurred so that we don't get there again. And so all of the staff members have been contacted. I've spoken with each staff member to understand how things are going. I, I know this is a really challenging time, and just with having conversations with the board, I offered the staff members, of course, a sounding ear as well as I can write a letter of recommendation as the President of the Board. So if there's anything that we can do beyond writing letters and also just taking full responsibility of all of the accounts that we've had to personally just sign fiduciary responsibility for, then we're here for you. We understand it. And, and we're, we're digging deep to make sure that we cover what we need to do to let you know that we understand that you're human and you have suffered a tragedy. So we're, we haven't even had time to grieve because we've just been in reaction mode. And we're okay with that. That's why we're still here. We stayed the distance because we're okay with putting out the fires. The other portion is all of the contractors. So all of the contractors received a letter, and it wasn't a letter of termination, but just this is our final communication, and we have your invoices. And those invoices, as well as staff payments, they have all been taken into consideration with the stabilization plan that has been written by the board and submitted to the county. So the county is in receipt of a stabilization plan that really was designed to stop the bleeding. And what I mean when I say stop the bleeding is if you have a storage account and you are behind three months on storage, then there's something called an auction that occurs. So we didn't want that to happen, and the county was very gracious in going line by line through our requests in the stabilization plan and telling us what they will accommodate and what they will not address at this time. So there will be more to follow as we continue to talk on what has been rolled out in that stabilization plan. All right. Status update of storage and equipment. So at this time, we have two storage locations, and those storages have been paid for through the end of April. And we will have to pay again on storage after April, as well as we talked to Tocas, and there may be an opportunity to get some storage space from the county. So we're looking into that option. We also have some things stored here in the building at 3700, and we also still have equipment at 2701. So we are working diligently to coordinate with volunteers and with the board to have communications with the previous lease owners to allow us some time to come in and secure the equipment. And that's, that equipment, securing that equipment is contingent on where are we going to set up? And we're going to potentially set up at 3700. More to follow when we get to the conversation on leases. But those are things that have to be entered before we can move to next phases. So we're here to have conversations on who we have spoken to and what the current conversation is as we move through these talks. We just have them in specific categories so that we can continue to do things here in decency and in order. All right. Production. So the status of W E R A. So as of right now, Ted has been instrumental in submitting the appropriate documentation so that AIM W E R A, the broadcast, then has been able to go offline for six months without any penalties. That six-month clock started last month. So we have five more months on this particular request. And Ted is just in a position and have some connections where we have the opportunity to have some leeway to get another six-month extension. We're not looking at needing that, but after that six-month extension, that's when we'll go off the air completely. So I'm giving you the timeline, so you can also be vigilant and letting us know, hey, we're at month three, we don't hear anything on the broadcast, what's the holdup? So hold us accountable for those things, and that's the purpose of these meetings and notes, so that you don't have to write down everything. We're going to capture this. It's on video. So replay the video and just make sure you hold us accountable, and we're open for that. All right. Producers and members of AIM have communicated to the board that members are extremely interested in seeing AIM continue as a thriving organization. And we haven't taken that lightly because we know that there was a lot of rumor control, especially after you saw things written in the paper. AIM is here to stay. And oh, by the way, the members are the only one that can dissolve AIM. And we're, we're not that. We're the, we're members, but we're, we can't dissolve AIM. So we want to put any rumors to rest if those have been swirling out there. All right. And status of AIM TV as well. AIM TV, of course, is not up, but I have had a talk with Arcilius to just understand what's it going to take to get up and running in AIM TV. And it really is, a decision has to be made on what location will AIM reside in. And once that location is decided, then it's easy as drawing up a proposal and giving us the straw map on what it looks like to run cables and get started again. So it's not a heavy lift, but there, there are some costs to, you know, to ensue to get that started because we're hiring, or we're not hiring anyone, but it's going to require some some engineering to get that done. And to get it done the right way the first time, because we don't want to redo this once we get set up. So we understand that AIM TV is valuable and relevant, and we look to get AIM TV back up as well. All right. And the last thing I have is meeting with AIM producers, but I know why that was on our agenda. And that was on our agenda because there has been a meeting of producers to just really talk about, you know, what does this look like going forward? And it's been my understanding that it is a positive look going forward when the producers met. So with that said, I am going to move to the next agenda item, and that will be with Claire, and Claire's going to speak on communication and membership.
Yes, indeed. Okay. So first up in my updates, as Secretary, I've been kind of serving as the sort of communications point person. And I want to let you all know about some new leads, or, well, not super new at this point. Anyways, county appointee members of the board. Many things have happened since we last gathered together in person at the annual meeting. And chief among the really, really good things to have happened recently are these appointments to AMES Board from the Arlington County Board. Richard Archibald has served as Chief Information Security Officer for Arlington County for the past five years. His background in media production, security, and technology has made him an invaluable staff coordinator for the Information Technology Advisory Committee, or ITAC, which does advisory things with regards to AIM. As best I understand it. And he served as our go-to governance and parliamentarian expert since the county appointed him to AMES Board effective January 23rd. Arlington County Board also appointed Brenna Hellford to AMES Board on January 23rd. Brenna is the former Assistant County Manager and Director of Communications and Public Engagement for Arlington County, and has since left County Service for federal service, joining the Office of Disability Employment Policy at the U.S. Department of Labor, and as such, her term with AMES Board ended on March 29th. Brenna was an incredible resource during her tenure on AMES Board, and while we are sad to see her go, we are thrilled that Diane Fresh is taking her place. Diane. Diane Fresh has served as Director of Arlington County Libraries since 2006, as after a 31 career, 31-year career, there you go. At the Library of Congress, she founded the Arlington Reads Program, is a certified leadership coach, and comes to AMES Board with high praise from the Arlington County Board. And Diane's term on AMES Board began on April 2nd. So please, big round of applause. Um, the other part of my update here is in regard to the status of AIM's social media accounts and other communications. Since the board has taken over operations for, of AIM for the time being, I've been working with other board members to secure access to all of AIM's accounts from social media and the newsletter to administrative and operations accounts. And a note on the AIM and Wira websites. Thank you for that very quick reaction. A note on the AIM and Wira websites. If you've tried to visit arlingtonmedia.org recently, it may appear as if the site is down. It's not. It's a quirk of the website system that we're working on, but you just have to type in the www dot for the arlingtonmedia.org part. Website's not down. Just type in the www and you're good to go. But that's not the case for wera.fm. You can type in just that, and it's fine. Finally, the, with regards to the status of the current membership list, because that's also on my roles and responsibilities as Secretary, getting access to Rusher has been challenging, but we're working to ensure that we do have full access. And for voting purposes today, I'm currently working off a list generated right before staff was laid off. So that is all I have for the moment, and I'm going to kick it to Richard for some updates on finances and leases. The current membership, I will go into that further right before we do voting things because we do have form and operate that. Yes. Oh, yeah. Cool. Awesome. Awesome. Okay. On to Richard.
I will be providing the treasurer's update tonight. Our treasurer, Amanda, could not be with us, but I have been assisting with the finances. All the reporting and all of the payables that are due, and you can't hear me in the back. Okay. Slide this over a little bit. See if that picks up even a little bit better. Face it towards. Okay. There we go. Is that better? Great. Okay. So, a quick update. I'm not going to assume anybody knows why we're here where we are, so I want to give a bit of context for how we got here. Over the past 18 to 24 months, let me rewind one second. I, I've been AIM's kind of relationship manager for the county for about five years. I joined in 2018. I come from film and television. Folks in the county said, hey, you, you understand this stuff. Can you go help us with AIM? So I met Jackie very early on. I was talking to AIM back at DePaul about it. Lot of history. But in the last 18 to 24 months, we had seen a number of cash flow crises and liquidity crises where there was no money to pay staff. After the fourth time that happened, we got together and said, we need to pause. This is a time where we need to start asking questions. We need to understand the planning processes, the reporting processes, get to understand why we aren't getting a budget that's actionable, and we're reaching cash flow crises regularly, too regularly. So at that, that fourth event happened in January of this year. And at that time, the county board said to AIM, at this moment, we are exercising a right to audit, and we are pausing funding. So that is where we find ourselves now. The audit has commenced. There has been a delivery of the first batch of documents, and we're working on the second batch of documents to provide to the auditors. This is a back and forth process. We will give them folders full of data, of documents, and they will read through and then ask follow-up questions, and we'll send more documents. And we don't know exactly how long that's going to take. We are all working on an express path for this. We want it to go quickly, but still be thorough. And our audit partner has also committed to, to being as diligent as they can to review as quickly as they can while still being thorough. While that audit process continues, funding from the county continues to be paused. As Rhonda mentioned, we did get a small amount of money. When we first started working through the payables, we realized there were a couple of items that you can't put on pause. There's liability insurance that you do not want to have a break in coverage, so we had to make sure we could pay that. As Rhonda mentioned, the storage units that might have gone to auction, we needed to make sure we secured those assets. So we did get a small amount of funding, about $25,000, to cover those immediate payables. At the moment, that leaves a balance of $100,000 because $125,000 would have been the quarterly payment for operations that AIM would have received in January had the cash flow crisis not happened. So that's where we're at today. Functionally, we have access to the financial systems. We are able to get information to the auditors. That's all working well. We have a deliverable this month for you, the members, but also for the county board, to deliver a balanced budget. You may have seen in the county board presentations that AIM's allocation or appropriation in the county board was set at $260,000 for fiscal '25. That is a reduction from prior budget periods. We want to make sure we can live within that amount of money. The budget we submit to you and to the county will be a draft. There will be an asterisk. We ask that you be patient with us because as we go through the audit and as we have conversations with the county, the budget may need to change. But we want you to have something to look at, to reflect on, to comment on, to give suggestions. It will be helpful if you all engage in the budget process with us and give us your feedback. Lastly, leases. This is complicated. The organization has two leases. Legally, here it's called a license for space at 3700. It is about $20,000 a year to be in the space, and that includes a few offices and a few studios. At the end of 2023, a lease was signed with JBG Smith for about 250 square foot of space on the ground floor of 2300 Clarendon in the Courthouse Building. That has direct window access out to the courtyard, but it, it used to be a dry cleaner. It's not a very large space. That lease is about $40,000 a year, five-year lease. Ultimate amount encumbered to the organization is 200 and something thousand. There was some free rent in there, and I'm still trying to quantify that free rent to know what the total amount was, but let's say 40,000 times five right now. I have started discussions with JBG Smith about options for that space because the lease does not have a open termination clause for the organization. The termination at this point would be solely at the discretion of JBG Smith. So I've been transparent with them about the financials, about the current situation, about cash flow, and I've asked them to submit ideas. They are working on that. I continue to get very specific questions about financial position and about history of the lease. And as I learn more, I'll share with the board, but as of now, it is still a conversation, so we don't know what the disposition of that lease will be. Once we have more clarity on JBG, and once we have more clarity on the budget, there will likely be a question about where AIM exists from a physical space perspective. So just prepare for that conversation. We aren't ready to have it because we just don't know enough. With that, I am done.
All right.
And we go to Q and A.
Yes. Um, so like I said, we will have Q and A for 30 minutes, and let me get my timer out. If you have a question or statement that you would like to submit for the public, you can, I guess, line up at the mic if that sounds good. And I will cut you off considering you're after two minutes. Not before. Yes.
How do you want to handle online questions?
For online questions, would it be useful for me to come over there?
Maybe if they raise their hands and we alternate.
Yeah, yeah. If you're online, if you can raise your hand in the, or ask your question in the chat.
Yeah, if you type the question in the chat, I can read it out to them. If you feel you really need to say it verbally, that's okay, too. Raise your hand so that we know that you want to, you want to ask a question.
Let me get this thing great. And then just one second. Yeah, so we'll alternate between in-person questions and online questions. And we'll respond as, as things go along, and we'll plan to end the Q and A at 8:00 unless depending on how things are going. Okay, um, first question.
Thank you for all your hard work. I have a couple of questions. I know the audit is ongoing.
Oh, yes, please.
Tom Shod, member since 1991. The audit is ongoing, and that will handle the financials. Would it be possible for the current membership to also get copies or have access to copies of the minutes of the board meetings for the past three years during which this financial crisis developed so that we can see what decisions were made? And will the answers in the audit answer the question of what were $300,000 worth of consulting fees spent on? And I know it wasn't anybody here. Who hired the CEO and who determined the salary structure and bonus structure, annual bonus structure for the CEO, which had a significant contribution in placing us in this liquidity position?
Yeah, thank you so much for your question. So on the subject of meeting minutes, the minutes from the past three years, I would, I'm very much working on getting, like, just getting that together in a series of PDFs that we'll be able to put on the AIM website. So anybody, because we're, you know, we're a public body that receives public funding, and so those minutes need to be publicly accessible. And I'm working on a system to get those on AIM's website and just have a living space for them. And as for the meeting minutes between the annual meeting in December and now, those are not yet, we haven't, like, done a motion to approve those as a board, but that will happen at the next meeting, and once that happens immediately, they will be, they will be available. And so I very much want to send an email update about, like, once we get all of this stuff sorted with Rusher, so if you need to, like, double-check your membership and things like that. And in that email will also be, hey, here's all of the minutes on this website for the past three years, and we'll get those, we'll get those up there.
I'll take the question on the consulting fee. The honest answer is, we don't know. We, we can't corroborate what actually took place in the space of consulting. We can, we will get that information. I think you asked, will the audit reveal that? So we will have that information. Yes.
Yes. I'll add a little bit to this.
Thank you.
One of the, the main issues that is driving the audit beyond the liquidity concerns is financial reporting. One of the main issues that is driving the audit beyond the liquidity concerns is financial reporting. There are a lot of technicalities around the capital that the county has granted to AIM over the years. Because it comes from FCC designation of PPG or PEG funding, right? And in the, in the most recent few years, early in that process, there was a lot of misunderstanding of what was PEG versus what was not PEG capital and then what was operational. There were tremendous amounts of conversations back and forth to try and build an accounting language for AIM so that their financial reporting could accurately categorize those expenses and then provide a valid report to them. So I can't tell you for sure that it was $300,000 in consulting until I see how the auditor has looked at the categorization. We will be able to tell you, as, as you mentioned, the names are on the checks. So we will be able to, at some point, have a report of what organizations, what consultants received what dollar amount. That was prior to my tenure and I think even prior to your tenure.
So the, what, so I was on the very first board meeting that I attended when I was voting in, voted in in October 2021. The board prior to, the board, prior to that year, had done an executive leadership search and determined that Whitney Carell was going to be the best person to serve in an interim executive director capacity and was offered the contract and accepted the contract. And I was, that, that class of the board was who in, after the annual meeting in October 2021 was the one who formally voted to, yes, we would like to extend the offer to Whitney Carell as interim executive director. And then she was on a contract that we re-discussed at the beginning of each fiscal year. And so the sorry, collecting my thoughts here. The president, the president of the board at the time led the discussions with Whitney about the about, about her salary package and was very much in favor of wanting to aggressively yeah, just be, be very generous with her compensation package. And so that was discussed in a board meeting in January. The most recent, her most recent one was discussed and approved in a board meeting in July of 2023. Yes. Correct, yes.
We do have a couple of questions online.
Yes, we can alternate between the online questions and the in-person.
Ben Cobb asks, has the WER station log been located, secured and updated? This is a critical collection of documents required by FCC.
I know that Amanda, who is not with us tonight, is looking for that specific document. And Jackie has found it.
Nice.
Okay.
Oh, thank you.
So, yes.
Next question.
I think we are doing a lot about oh, I apologize. My name is Joe Gueron. I produced for many years the program Lobby, a program of World Music. And I was sick and tired and on January stopped, two weeks before the drama evolved. Now, I see we are spending a lot of energy to understand the past possible malfeasance and, and the future in a very constrained, physical way in which we now the world is emerging in such immense difference. Why don't we start exploring a virtual internet radio presence while all this is happening? And it would take relatively a very little dollar amount. There are services all around. We only need technical assistance in creating a virtual WERA as soon as possible. So this wonderful talent that is here frustrating, waiting for Godot can get the energy released, number one. Number two, I don't know how good our TV programs were. I remember there were one or two that was acceptable, but whatever, create a TV channel in YouTube for WERA TV and keep an effort in the existing material. And it's wonderful, wonderful material that is there that it doesn't have an outlet. And whatever happens to the physicality of the future WERA, let's be realistic. We will be lucky if we have a radio station working on in one year. Okay, it takes a lot of energy. I remember the pains of the gestation of the WERA station.
Thank you so much for your time. I really appreciate it.
We have a number we, we have a number of questions online.
What I'm, what I'm discussing here is we wanted to get to the idea stuff at the end of tonight. Because no, no, no. All ideas are welcome. We, we have a responsibility to the county to answer the audit questions and we have a responsibility to the membership to answer the questions posed in the letter. But once we get through those questions, our plan tonight was to end with what is the future of AIM in this room? What do, what do we do as, as a group of volunteers, as a group of interested people to reboot? Yeah. Is that fair? Can we, can we postpone a little bit? Okay.
We have a number of fairly specific operational questions. Do you want me to just go through a bunch of them? Because most of them are, I, I think could be answered fairly quickly. Because they, they're kind of specific to what people are doing. One is, do you think AIM TV will start by September 1st, 2024? It's a producer who's looking to get in there. And there's a related things as well. So I'm just going to go ahead and go through. As a producer, can we still submit shows to AIM or at least the YouTube channel or whenever program starts again? And is there access to equipment? Have all operations for the membership ceased? And are there, does that, that in means, you know, courses specifically taught at AIM? And are you planning on to bring back the film festival? Somebody also asks if you've looked into virtual production.
What I will say is that in the past month, we have been working really hard to make sure as a volunteer board that we have the kinds of admin and operational things that enable production to happen. We've been working to make sure that those are all locked down and squared away. And we've been very much working with, Amanda has been very, Amanda McKay, McKay, our treasurer, has been very much in communication with lots of producers, especially for the radio, about feedback, ideas and ways to make production possible in the future. And that is certainly going to require a lot of volunteer management and figuring, figuring things out that we're very excited to, to figure out. I would say, and please feel free to chime in, but I would say that we don't necessarily have super concrete answers to those questions right this second.
No, but a good idea is to just consolidate that effort. If you begin to build it out, then it's certainly easier to present that to the board or whenever we have open meetings. And then we could address them as we move forward. But certainly go ahead and develop the list. So we can just go down the list. But we can't hold, don't hold this to a September 1 date. That's aggressive for us. Definitely interested though. I told them we need some ray of sunshine around here and do things that AIM does. So yes, I'm sorry. Were those all the questions online in the collective?
We had one more asking if there will be a booth at the county fair this year.
Will there be a booth at the county fair this year?
Yes.
All right, yes. There will be a booth at the county fair this year.
Oh, and on the subject of, oh, I was going to say something and then it flew out of my brain, classes and workshops. Unsurprisingly, they are not happening right at this moment. But as the, you know, main pillars of what AIM does, radio, TV and workshops and classes, those are the things that we are so excited to work towards and work with volunteer membership to make that happen in the, in, in a glorious future to come.
Yes, and, and it all is contingent on where we're going to have our home. So we're looking at the options right now. And it's April, we, we just got through tax day. And so by the 1st of May, we're going to have some really keen information on what the location of AIM will be. And then from there, so have your documents ready. Let's, let's get everything loaded. So when we're ready to talk and tell you, guess what, 3,700 is our location and we're working with George Mason, whatever it may be, just be ready to go. We're excited, so thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name is Miriam Janari. It's very nice to see a lot of people that I worked with for many years at Arlington Independent Media. Started with the Arlington Weekly News. For those people who aren't aware, the Arlington Weekly News was the original training ground for people who came through classes. I took Kathy's classes probably 10 years ago. And, and then we went on to, to do the weekly news. When AIM 2.0 started, I was still with the weekly news but had already spun off a nonprofit called Sustainable Scoop so that we could meet the needs of students who wanted to get community service hours and participate in civic events and affairs. So we, we spun off and we have a location in, on 23rd Street at the Melwood location. So as a nonprofit organization, we would like to offer a lifeline and some support to Arlington Independent Media because we do have a space right now. We also have spoken to the Arlington Public Library and also to the county board as well as the Civic Federation. And today to the Arlington Career Center about the concern for the lack of summer programming. And we are seeking right now support to fill that gap. And, and hopefully produce programming that can be set aside and evergreen and used when AIM's program launches. So my question to you is, what is your position on working with other partnership nonprofit organizations to support and continue to meet the services that people count on but are not having access to because of AIM's restructuring? Thank you.
Well, I have to clap to that. Very good question. I will say in, in my two-year tenure, I have not experienced partnerships, but that just mean that it just wasn't happening since I've been here. And I'm certain that to take this to the board and then to the members to really offer, you know, how can there be some synergy? And, and get some youths taken care of is certainly a question that will go on our docket and we will personally respond back to your question in writing. Awesome. Thank you kindly, yes. Any more questions online?
Thank you, everyone. My name is John Varan, WERA of The Night Out. First, I want to commend the board for having the courage to come in here in what could be a very contentious gathering. Simply because we're not here to celebrate a tremendous victory, but to figure out how to stitch the pieces of our puzzle back together again. So let's all take a deep breath. That's for you, Aparna, wherever you are out there. Now, what we have here is a wonderful board that's really doing their best trying to build in transparency and communication. Things that were sorely lacking in the past. And that's wonderful. And I applaud your efforts and keep doing that. And that's a great lane to stay in. However, we are talking about a broadcast organization here. And there's one thing I know, that's that you cannot run an organization without some form of management. While you have great expertise in what you're doing, you may not have broadcast management experience. We have such people in this room. We have people with a long experience in this room. And while it's wonderful to try and run things on a shoestring, you cannot run a 21st century organization on a volunteer basis. This isn't your local Girl Scout troop cupcake baking option here. So please make sure that you put in place enough organizational and administrative personnel to ensure that shows are timely and everyone lines up as they should. Right now, Arlington Independent Media is a possibility. Very soon, it will be a responsibility. And whoever carries that weight should be adequately compensated and rewarded for the effort they, they will make. And I thank you for your time.
Are there any more questions? Yeah, come on up.
Hi, everyone. I'm Jeff Hoffman. Couple of like nuts and bolts questions. How many board seats are there and how many are filled right now and how many are empty? And also, as, as John was kind of alluding to, we have a lot of people in this room who are willing to roll up their sleeves and help. Can you please let us know what you need? Because you don't have to do all the heavy lifting yourself and that goes with Amanda too. Just, you know, I know Jackie and some others have been carting equipment and so on, but there's got to be other stuff that, that we can do. And just please include us. We've been in the dark for 18 to 24 months, as, as I've heard. We're just dying to be involved, you know? So please let us know what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. I will go ahead and answer it with the, what I was going to say in the getting involved section. And that is that right now we have five vacant seats on the board at this moment. That looks like one, one-year term that expires, well technically, I guess now it would be a six-month term, expiring in October 2024. Two seats that would expire in 2025 and two seats that would expire in 2026. So again, that's one, one-year term, two, two-year terms and three, and two, three-year terms.
Does that include the county appointees?
That does not include the county appointees. So we have two, we have three seats for county appointees. Two of them are currently filled and the county will appoint the one that is currently open at their discretion. On the AIM board currently, I'm just going to double check. Seats 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11. 11 elected seats total. And the three appointed seats for 14 total board members.
Jackie, can you address the mic, please?
Sorry. My question is
My question is, you're saying that there's five seats open. I'm just trying to do the math.
There's, there's six elected board members on, on the board right now and two county officials. I can read.
Who, who are the two that, I mean, Amanda?
Amanda, myself, Jim, Monique Lyons, Rhonda, and Valerie.
I forgot about Valerie. That's why I was trying to make the math work. And so then there's five open seats.
Yes.
Evoked.
Yes.
Okay.
It's complicated.
Excuse me, Ulysses Campbell. Uh, question about those seats. Does Comcast still have a seat to appoint?
No.
Okay, all right.
That was, did it run away with? Yeah, yeah.
We do have one comment that might be of interest on the, um, internet, just to get that, you know, out there and noted. Clear Productions, Goglehill Clear Productions TV, Radio Network, we've been with the network for over three years now. I'd like to volunteer our services. Perhaps we can temporarily, uh, be part of the solution until AIM comes back. We have internet, TV network, and we can air some of the shows, question mark. All right, so this is, uh, the question is. Okay, if you go with an all online model, how will that affect PEG funding?
PEG funding is explicitly for cable access television, studios, equipment, capital investment. Uh, when I first started with the county, if the FCC interpretation was building students, very restricted. Um, there was an order that came through in 2019 that expanded the definition of PEG capital to be just like regular accounting capital. If it is a long-term asset with a life, it depreciates, you call it capital. If it is affiliated with the broadcast of public access television, it's PEG. If AIM does not have a public access broadcast, they are no longer eligible. If AIM has and is eligible for capital, ancillary services can happen around that. There's no prohibition on saying, well, in the middle of the night when nobody's using the studio for TV, someone can't record a podcast. But the eligibility rests on that public access fee going out to Comcast. Correct. It has to go to the cable system.
Thank you. Are there any more questions?
Hi, Randy Cohen, um, Broadway Bound Producer. I don't have a legal background, so my terminology is, but, uh, many of us have been wondering if there's going to be any action or taken towards the former CEO or possibly not, uh, them not receiving their bonus because they've been fired and because of negligence and your responsibility. And again, I don't have a legal terminology. Is anybody going to be accountable in this?
It is a very difficult question to answer legally. There are very explicit employment protections in the Commonwealth of America, but I, I cannot answer questions about how people eat, anything like that.
No.
We, and at this time, um, yeah.
And so hopefully.
Linda, I think we can have some more.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Are there any?
We cannot hear you online on the meeting chat. I don't know if there's, we've, if you can see the chat, none of us can hear you. I don't know if something changed.
Can you hear me now? The, uh, board microphone? Maybe not? Can you hear me now?
It's a little better, but not much.
Cause now we know that I'm in this room. I'm speaking. My first question is about the stabilization plan and when members can see it. My second question is, will, will there, if there's going to be member input, will there be budget meetings? That include members or how is that input going to happen? I'm still, I'm filling time, I'm talking. Okay.
Okay, reset your first question, please.
First question is about the stabilization plan of which you spoke. Um, I didn't really get the gist of it. I realize it's a work in progress, but are the members, you say that there is a stabilization plan that the county has received.
Yes.
Can, why, can members see that plan?
So we did talk about that as a board and it does have personal identifiable information on the stabilization plan and to keep information confidential as a board, we just voted.
Well, we could, so there is compensation data on there that we can't release.
Right.
But we could redact the lines that are compensation and we could redact the totals.
Okay.
So you couldn't reverse engineer the compensation numbers. But essentially it is the stuff that is to keep the entity legal and solvent. It is not the entire plan.
Yeah, no, the, the, the current plan is just the band-aid to stop the bleeding. I got that. I'm talking about the longer-term stabilization plan or reset plan as talked as, as discussed.
Yep.
Um, you know, that plan is what I'm interested in members.
Misunderstood. That plan has not been written.
Will it be released to the members?
The stabilization plan won't be released to the members, but the strategic engagement plan on how we implement the stabilization will be released to the members. So that's going to answer what you're asking, what it's going to look like one year from now, two years from now, three years.
Yeah, I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in knowing what the board's plan, the current board's plan is beyond keeping stuff from going to auction, what the plan is to stabilize the organization. So again, not just right now, but what is the plan going forward? I know that, um, you know, for instance, Ted has volunteered time, that there are other engineers that have been offered to volunteer time in order to get the radio station back up and the television station back up and do those things. So have you guys, when are you going to create a reset plan? And when you do, will it be released to the members?
The answer is yes, it will be released to the members, a reset plan. Yes, it will be released to the members and we have a, another meeting in May, May?
29?
May 29 is when we will consolidate all of the effort to stop the bleeding because that's been our, that's been taken up the amount of time needed to do what we need to do to just keep AIM alive. So we will work our, we call it a strategic engagement plan. It's a three-year plan. We will be working that and it will be released in the beginning of fiscal year.
Okay, that was the, thank you.
And then also too, we as a board have discussed ways for us to have solid communication channels between, here's a potential budget for FY25, which is not something we have immediate information about right this second because the audit is still ongoing, but we want to have an engagement of, here's our potential draft. What do y'all think? Please submit your thoughts here so that we can, and like have it not just be, here's what's happening, but this is a conversation.
So we'll get input from the members before you give a completed draft.
Yeah. And, and, uh, many of you, or I don't know how many of you, but our last meeting was quite well attended by public. I think there were 40 people online. From now on, those board meetings are open meetings. They will, in many cases, need to be in person for quorum reasons, but there'll be a virtual option, they'll be open, there'll be public comment periods, there'll be question periods. So we want everybody to come on the journey with us to build this plan. It's not going to happen behind closed doors.
Okay. It was, it's good to have that affirmation.
Yeah.
Um, so then about the budget meetings, will they be separate than the next board meeting as you're preparing the budget? Cause you had said you hope that there'll be input, there'll be a draft. How will that look? Can you just speak to that for a moment? Will there be special budget meetings?
Um, I would like to do that. However, I want to get through the conversation with the county about the budget because ultimately they supply the funds before we do too much, um, debate and, and kind of back and forth with members, right? Um, and, and hopefully people understand why. Like I don't want us to come up with the budget and then go to the county and they reject it versus the county saying, here's the budget, here's where you have wiggle room and then we come back to the members and say, here's what we have, here's where we have wiggle room, right? So I don't know the timing on that yet because I don't know the audit yet. So as soon as I know the audit's done, Valerie, Amanda and I are planning to get this budget, we're going to give you a draft, but as soon as the audits, the audit is done, we want to take that to the county board, we want to get it blessed and then we want to come to you. So I, we'll keep communicating on dates, but I don't have them yet.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, Andy Rosenberg, uh, board member for quite a few years and, uh, an associate producer of, um, of, uh, Folk Alley. So a lot of what you're talking about is either dovetailed or specifically involves the need for communication to members, to both, both ways, members, producers, board, staff. And, uh, so I would, uh, put in the, uh, to the need for setting up some kind of structure that's accessible by all of those parties. There has been some considerable amount of, uh, chat, uh, about, uh, about ideas and communication, uh, from the, uh, the radio producers group. And, uh, they've established, uh, uh, kind of a chat on a, on platform called, um, Discord. And, uh, you know, people are lobbying for various platforms, but, but we need a general platform to be able to have general communication, to let us know when these documents, uh, are coming out, when you need specific kind of information from the membership. So I would urge, um, you guys to set up some kind of unified, uh, uh, communication plan for, for that as soon as possible. Um, and I would like to, uh, uh, also endorse, um, John Moran's, uh, uh, idea about, pardon?
Did I get that right?
Sorry, sorry about that, John. Uh, about, uh, getting somebody for, uh, as a program director or program manager for the radio station if you want to, uh, emphasize, uh, uh, and streamline getting the radio station organized to be successful and to be self-sustaining, which I think is an important part of, uh, of the group. So keep that, please, uh, keep that in mind. And appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Andy. Yes, is there another question before?
I do want to keep everybody's eyes on time at 8:00 PM.
Joe Guerin again. The way I have witnessed this evening, it appears that suddenly W E R A has become an appendage to Arlington County, which was not the vision when we came in. We had, we had, it was a community thing that county was helping, but it was not just an appendage of the county.
It isn't now.
Pardon me?
I don't think it's intended to be now.
It is evolving like that because there's not any other exploration of alternatives like Foristas being an organization, nonprofit. How many corporations have been sitting around Northern Virginia to be close to the feds, including our dear Amazon? Has the board considered getting someone who knows how to write grant petition?
The county being a private funder.
Yes, I mean, what I mean is that there are other ways to explore income for the organization. Okay? And I think that it will be useful perhaps in the board to have someone who knows how to write grant petition or hire someone.
Yes.
It will be a very nice investment and there is more money in those corporations than need tax write-off that the county may be willing to spend. And I see that the county is very happy to create baseball thing, but very stingy when it comes to radio and TV. Don't ask me why, but I don't see much investment in our world.
Do we know that? Thank you so much. Yes. Kathy?
Um, you have a, a question.
Is there like an answer to, are you guys pursuing income outside of the county?
The question is, are we pursuing income outside of the county funding?
Today, no, it's fine. No, today the answer is no, but will that be a part of what we discuss from moving forward? Yes.
Sorry, I thought, I wasn't sure if that was part of what.
I appreciate it. Yeah. That is absolutely also been very much my and many other former and current and hopefully future board members desire very deeply for sure.
Um, I'm going to add one thing, well, I'm going to add one thing to that, which is when I, when I became AIM's liaison five years ago, the question for Paula Valley was that fundraising question, even back then. Uh, if you remember, the county had said 5% per year is going to come off of county funding and AIM has to start adapting to alternative funding sources, right? So the message isn't new. There was a pandemic in the middle, funding stayed the same, uh, and then we've hit this road bump, this hiccup where we got a little bit of extra funding, but we had these liquidity crises and it, and it has put us in the situation we're in now. But the, the future of AIM is going to be dependent on its ability to raise funds because th- this is a long story for the county board of trying to get AIM to, to pick up and raise funds. So when we get to the next steps part, I'm going to ask who wants to be on a fundraising committee? Because we want volunteers to start coming up with ideas for how we go out and get funds. Grants is one way. There's a lot of ways the organization can raise funds, but we can't do it alone. We've got to have help and we need volunteers with great ideas.
I just want to speak to that a little bit because pre-pandemic, we were, um, had heavily increased our, both our earned income and our donations. So we were on the right track. I call this a little bit more than a speed bump. The pandemic is a speed bump by comparison, but to my friend Joe and to everyone else, I want to make it clear that the county has not been stingy. The point is that the county gave AIM close to $2 million over two years in a, um, in both peg, a combined PEG funds and operating funds. The problem that we are at is that money was misspent. And so I ask, I, I will get to a question here to the sitting board members who were there for that crash. I would like you to respond to, you were there with an ability to stop the car from careening off the mountain. So I guess I, I just want to ask you, how did it happen that the, the car managed to get all the way down before anyone hit the stop, hit the brake?
Sure. So, uh, thank you. Yeah. Thank you, Jackie. So yeah, Jackie, this definitely gets to the open letter and that open letter wants or, or, you know, has requested for approval of actions to return to good governance and accountability and also the removal of board members unwilling to address failures of accountability. So let's, let's get at failures of accountability. Um, I'm going to start with whatever the decision was made to, um, vote for the salary and the bonus occurred. The, the culture. The culture was set, the condition of the culture was set, when that board agreed to fund that salary and that, that bonus. So with that culture is, is a level of confidence that, okay, you all have agreed, the board have agreed to pay me this fund and this bonus. This is what the CEO mindset is. So why would they think that it was anything wrong or inappropriate? But because the board approved it. So fast forward from now, there is a culture inside of AIM that we, AIM agreed to, the board agreed to pay a salary and a bonus. Fast forward to August of 2022, when I was invited to become and be a member of the board. And I attended the October 2022 meeting and was quite scared, like, what is going on here and why? And so what I agreed to become a part of the board as being voted into the board, I agreed to come on the board and share my congressional and governance experience. And I worked with a dear member here, Kate, on that project. And inside of that, the culture of the board was the president of the board will take the voice of the board and communicate to the CEO, not the entire board. With that decision, there were some collateral damage that occurred in that cultural process of the board allowing the president to be the voice of the board. And there is some documentation in the bylaws where the president should be communicating to the CEO. And we allowed, you're asking me what happened? This is what was allowed, and this is what occurred. We agreed to that model, and we agreed to not communicate with the staff based on that model. In addition, the CEO was clear that it was her responsibility to then hire those who were accountants, contractors, producing our products that we have fiduciary responsibility for, so financial reports. And so to your point, you were able to see the financial reports and look at the dollar amount that was given to the organization. That dollar amount was spent on the CEO's discretion. So the board wasn't oversight on what dollar was spent on what activity. We did receive the financial reports, and we did receive the annual reports. And there was just a lot of volatility in between the financial reports and the annual reports, where the numbers just didn't add up. And when we knew that our then-president was outgoing, and we had a turnover of a couple of presidents, the incoming president was then the one who was the, who was the president while the entire staff was furloughed unbeknownst to the board. We had a board retreat, and inside of that retreat, we addressed all of the concerns from the board, typed those up, presented those to the CEO, I'm sorry, presented those to the president of the then-board, and that president just wasn't accountable for taking the voice of the board to the CEO. That president resigned, and I was asked to consider becoming the next president with the notion of you're going to have to, you're not going to have a staff, and you're going to have to fire the CEO. For my leadership style, it was clear to me when I walked in the door that AIM has a cultural challenge. And am I willing to be in this position to help AIM get through that cultural challenge? Absolutely. That's why I'm still here. I do believe in the mission and in the vision of AIM. And I also just want to see it thrive. You have to realize this, I've never seen AIM function. I've been here for two years, and I have not seen AIM do what I know that this organization has the potential to do. And I'm excited about sticking around, stopping the bleeding, and getting it back on track. And I would love for the members to be a part of that, because I never received an email from a member until I got a four-page letter of hold, hold you accountable. Okay, where, where were you a year ago to hold me accountable? So I am saying, I'm excited, I'm grateful that these, this information was brought out, but I would have also loved to get a four-page letter of how can we help? How can we be of assistance? So I have not gotten the same response. There has not been a special meeting of members to come to us and tell us, hey, we know that you all haven't even had chance, had a chance to think. And we didn't sign up to be staff, we signed up to be board members. And so here we are, finding ourselves doing the responsibilities of the staff to just keep things afloat and try and rebuild with the community, rebuild with the county, and then just rebuild with ourselves, because we're all new fairly to each other as well and how our leadership styles work. Wait a minute, wait a minute. Yes. Wait, wait a minute. Jack, I'm sorry, sir.
We will get there.
One moment. Yes, Jackie.
Well, I didn't really answer my question. You guys were there. I really want to try to get some insight. I understand there was a cultural difference and that you were convinced that the president was the only person who could speak, but also, all of you had a fiduciary responsibility to the organization. You should not have needed somebody to write a four-page letter. You knew that you were supposed to get budgets that made sense, that added up, that you were supposed to get P and Ls, that you were supposed to be audited as a nonprofit organization. So my, my question really, and I, I'm not trying to grill you guys. But I really need an answer to, how did you let it get to zero before you decided to change anything? Or if you did it because that letter, then, well, I'm really glad, but why did it take that? Your responsibility was from the time you became board members, and if you were watching, I mean, there's.
Yeah, we absolutely had this talk, and, and we were watching. So one of the things that Richard and I discussed is, he's been looking at the finances for five years, and kind of along the same line, red flags were coming up at the county, like, wait a minute, what's going on over there at AIM? And because of, again, I'm going to call it a chain of command, the county just got to the point as well to say, all right, now, now we need an audit. Because there is, people give you leeway to try and get it, right? But I will tell you, just from my own personal, looking at the actual documents, it was challenging, being a board member, having a CEO who hired the accountant to give us numbers on financial reports that we couldn't corroborate. And then when we raised the concern and we put things in writing, it just didn't get communicated to the CEO that this has to stop. That didn't get communicated, in my opinion. I don't know what the conversation was, but in my opinion, if, if the red flags would have gone to the CEO, I don't know, I'm not in the mind of that CEO. I know that there was some responsibility in that billet that didn't happen, but.
Yes, question?
Yes, we have a couple of questions online from Zach Jones. Formal question for the speakers, I've been to several of these public meetings over the last few months, including tonight, and I feel like there's been a lot of blaming of past boogeymen like former board members for almost all of the issues. I know that not everyone here was around for past choices, but you can't all be perfect, blameless angels. Can you commit to establishing that the buck stops with you folks now going forward? Can we, in this room, now take ownership of successes and failures?
Can I, can I speak to that?
Sure.
I have been on this board, and I've served as an interim president, and I did that before, I was really ready to do that, and I'm not going to cry, I'm going to do it.
You got it.
And I look back on the time that I've been on this board, and I know that I trusted a lot of people who, I, I put my, my trust, because I am a twenty-something on a board that I've never been on a board before, I'm speaking for myself exclusively here. I put my trust in people who, I trusted their judgment, I trusted that they knew what they were doing in terms of putting together those P and Ls and those reports from treasurers. And when I had, I was put in a position where I needed to take on the role of president of the board at the tender age of 26, I, I, I was doing what I thought was the best that I could do with what I knew at the time. And I, and I now know that I did not know enough, and I should have pushed harder, I should have asked more questions, I should have been like, you know what, I don't understand this as well as I could, and I really need to, like, dig in and really understand more. And I personally did not do that to the best of my ability, and for that, I am sorry. And I can also tell you that in more recent months, when I was more clearly made aware of the kinds of red flags that the county was, has been raising, the, the pushback to recognizing those red flags, there, there was pushback to recognizing those red flags, and I'm thankful to all of the people who legitimately, from the county to the auditors that are currently looking through our documents, to anybody who has been involved with trying to, like, pull the car out from the ditch, whatever analogy we're using here, I'm so thankful for those people. And, yeah, I want to be able to write the, the times that I, I could have asked harder questions, I could have, I could have. So for that, I am sorry.
I really appreciate that, as everybody else does here, I think. I want to kind of just adjust something that you said there, Wander, about the, the culture of AIM, that AIM has a poor culture, a culture problem. By the way, my name's Ken Avis, I am the antidote radio guy since 2016, when it started, I was the producers rep from the beginning, and then a board member when we were stopping the bleeding previously with Lynn, and when the pandemic was on, keeping the place alive at that stage. But the correction that I want to make, the adjustment to it, is I think you're probably referring to the culture problem of the board that you're dealing with. AIM itself had a vibrant culture, a vibrant, I mean, there were so many ideas so often, and so many barricades and obstacles a lot of the time to get those ideas implemented. And I think part of the issue now is if you continue to be the board, how do we open those doors? Because I think you, there was a lack of communication and a lack of understanding. You weren't getting communicated to, you weren't getting four-page letters, we weren't getting communicated to. The only communication I've had about Arlington Independent Media, or specifically WERA over the past few years, has been other members saying, do you have any idea what's going on? Because we haven't heard a damn thing, what's going on? But it wasn't a welcoming environment for us to even ask, we didn't know who to ask, we didn't know who to contact. It was a very closed system. And I think the comments that John made earlier about, there's a lot of hands here of people who are willing to help and who want WERA to continue. I think Arlington County wants something to continue. We don't know the shape of that, but I'm confident that you want something, and I've really appreciated also your comments and contributions here as well. We've got to get that communication bigger. We've missed it for two years. I'm loving hearing you speak tonight, because there's been an emptiness in my heart for two years, but I want to get that flipping radio up there again. Sorry, I'm selfish about radio, because, you know, whatever it is that's being played at the moment is bloody awful, and we've got tons and tons and tons of programs in the bag, and we're ready to produce those things, and we want to get the thing going. And I would, I would challenge the board, I know your priorities stem in the bleeding, but are there some low-hanging fruit, are there some things we can do to, to let the public know and let Arlington know that we're still viable, that we've got quality to offer, whether it's the temporary virtual radio system or otherwise?
Zip it. I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Paula. Absolutely, yes. And I really do understand and see, yes, the validity in, there, there has to be communication both ways. That's how this is going to move forward, that's how it's going to thrive. And then we can't, the board can't move forward without the input from the members. It's absolutely impossible, and nor do we want to. And so when you mentioned the culture is within the board, yes, it is, absolutely, I agree with you. And the goal is what we've all been discussing and getting something as simple, and I'm just going to share this, and I'm sorry, Claire, but something as simple as being able to communicate with the members through MailChimp, because, yeah, that is a cost to have that service, we just had to get some in-kind funds to even be able to have MailChimp, to even be able to communicate that there is a meeting. So we're, we're developing, as we speak, those tools to use so that the board can speak with members and that the members can speak with boards, and that, that culture of you can't talk to this person, or the members are muffled, because that did happen in the meeting that I attended, that the, the members were, were muffled. So that's gone, those days are gone. We have an open line of communication, and we certainly want to hear from our members. That's the only way we're going to move forward. Thank you so much.
So to that end, I.
One more?
Yes.
Just a clarification, please. Approximately, how much is AIM in the red?
At the mo, am I still on? At the moment, I estimate between 100 and 150,000.
Can you state your name for the record also?
Don Senter.
We do need to move forward, because it is, it is almost 8:30, and we need to be out of here in 30 minutes. So to the extent that we have done our best to explain as much as we can, we want to go forward in your confidence. And to that end, we are going to hold a confidence vote in the elected members of the board. And so what that, what the bylaws entail, it's kind of, it's kind of funky. So basically, if a particular member, because there's, there's votes of confidence and there's votes of no confidence, and we want to be able to go forward as your current board right now in your confidence. So we want to explicitly seek, but it is up to you, two-thirds of the members voting, members eligible to vote at this meeting, two-thirds vote in the affirmative. So basically, I'm not explaining this well, I'm doing my best, I'm sorry. What will appear on the next slide is a bit.ly short link and a QR code to go to a Google forum, where it will ask the question of you, for each member of the Board of Directors, do you approve of their actions to work toward the organization's return to good governance and accountability, and do you endorse their continued board service? And then there will be a yes, no, or abstain, multiple choice for each elected board member currently on, on the board. And if we, if, for example, two-thirds of voting members present here and online do not, if, if two-thirds of voting members present vote yes for me, for example, then I go forward in your confidence. If I do not get that two-thirds threshold, then we will go to a vote of no confidence, and you will have the opportunity to vote. I affirm that I vote in no confidence in Claire Seaton and other members of the board as such. So you have question marks.
Just point of information, how many voting members are here? How is that being calculated? And, you know, because you have to be a current member, you have to be an Arlington resident or a designee of an Arlington-based organization. So do you know that about who's here and who's not in the room?
So I have the, I've been, we have, we do have a forum of our current, I have the spreadsheet. Right now, we have, wait, I have it open in a different tab, I'm sorry. Right now, we have 146 voting members. 10% of that, of voting membership is 15 members present, there are about 50 of you in this room, and last I counted 18 online, though there's probably more at this point. So we do have. So we do have a forum for a member vote of confidence.
Claire, I just want to differentiate between voting members and non-voting members. How do we differentiate?
Yes. So voting members are residents, people who have had their membership is current as of 20 days prior to this date, which is March 28th. So if your membership is current as of that date, and you are a resident of Arlington or the sole designated representative of an Arlington business, then you are a voting member. And you can vote this evening. Yes.
Is it honor system? That's what I was trying to ask.
Right, yeah. So in that Google form, you will put your name. And I have a spreadsheet to tally against, to keep everything kosher. Does that answer your question?
That's the word I was trying to use.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you. And Lynn?
Lynn Borton, former board president and one of the authors of the letter that specifically asked for this action. I'm actually going to propose that you reconsider this course of action. I personally, although I'm not currently a member, but now eligible, thank you very much, I certainly would not be in a position to evaluate each of you individually. There's not enough information available. So in my mind, it would need to be an up or down across the board. I will say at this point, which we didn't know when we wrote the letter, or when we wrote the letter, there were many more people on the board. Since that time, many people have departed. You haven't actually addressed that specifically, but many people resigned. Membership was informed about the president. Other people resigned. And I don't actually know what kind of dribs and drabs, but people left. I tell myself a story about why that happened. And I tell myself a story about why you stayed. Having been in the position of trying to steward the organization at a point of tremendous crisis, I have a lot of sympathy for the position that you're in. I have less sympathy for the fact that you kind of put yourself in that position more than the pandemic was our responsibility. But we're here, right? You have stayed. Frankly, I would rather have another special meeting of the members in July or August in enough advance of the annual meeting so that there's a window of opportunity to be clear about nominations and board seats and that those of you who are like, you know what, done, can make that determination after you've had an opportunity to do what needs to be done. It doesn't make sense to me right now to stop the momentum that you are trying to build to right the organization. So I don't know what that does to the process. I'm only speaking for myself. I do want to very quickly say the letter also asked about 990s and the corporate filing with the state. I checked this afternoon. The organization is still listed as inactive pending. And to the people who want other places of funding, one of the things that I did in my tenure, Richard was actually really helpful in this, was think about where else can we go? And one of the things that they look for is that that good governance stuff is in place. So you can't do any of that until the audit is done, until the 990s have been filed, until your corporate status is active as opposed to inactive. I am happy to help with those things. But you have, those things have got to get done. Otherwise, none of this other stuff is going to matter. So.
Thank you.
So at the risk of opening some floodgates, and I'll step into my parliamentarian hat for a moment. There is no general procedure covering agenda items for a special meeting. We, as a board, are responsible to respond to the letter that was written with specific requests. If the writers of the letter, who basically put that on the agenda for the night, would like to change that, you can discuss amongst yourselves. And if you want to put a motion and a second on the floor, you're welcome to do so. But we, in the absence of the agenda being voted on to change that, we do have to have some sort of vote to respond to the letter. That's a lot of hands, so. Oh, okay.
Can you make a motion? Do you want to make a motion?
Can I make a motion to postpone the vote of no confidence? I think it's possible to go in, aim member or within residence. If it's appropriate, I'd like to make such a motion that
The people online cannot hear you. There is a motion on the floor to postpone the vote of no confidence of the board. How would you like to tally people online?
Can they do hands?
Can people either type in the chat their names and if they vote in favor? And then we will do a, so right now, we're counting affirmatives. So raise your hand in person. I will be counting these hands. If you are online, type your name and affirmative in the chat. You need to be an Arlington resident and you're
Or sole member of
Yes, or sole designated member representative of an Arlington business entity.
I know we have our hands up. And can you add to the motion? Or should it be a second motion to have a meeting in early October?
Do a second motion just for Glenn Linn.
Okay. I'm going to count the affirmatives. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. Sir in the front with the sport coat on, do you have your hand raised?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And now I have lost count. I'm so sorry. Continue your strengthy arms. Okay. 32 in person, affirmative.
I'm seeing four raised hands, five raised hands. We also have some written in, but some of them are duplicating the people who raised their hands. So I'm not sure how you want to count that.
Okay, so should I?
We have Zach Jones, Steve Cordell, Rob Bamperter, Arnold Dean, and Andrew Rude, Sean Walters, and a member who says they are Beverly Allen, Elaine Coats, all saying
We are counting the checks, not raising hands.
Yes. This is a postponed confidence affirmative.
That I count seven of those names? Yes? Eight? Thank you. Okay, eight affirmative online. Thank you. Anyone who wishes to vote no to the motion to postpone the vote of confidence slash no, no confidence in the board?
It's okay to vote no. It's okay to vote no.
Yeah, it is okay to vote no.
That's the kind of culture I want us to have. But it's okay to vote no.
Is there anyone online in the chat voting no?
Sorry, I have lowered everyone's hand. If you can now, if you wish to vote no, you do not wish to postpone the vote of the confidence vote, please indicate by raising your hand or saying that you are you saying negative? You want to say negative? Okay, in the chat. Time is ticking down. I see no raised hands. I see no one saying negative. Are we going to ask about abstentions?
Does anyone abstain? If you are in person and you wish to abstain and you are a voting member, please raise your hand. If you are joining us online, please write abstain in the chat. Seeing none in person. Any online?
I do not see any online at this point.
Okay. I have 32 votes in person and eight online for a total of 40 votes affirmative to postpone the vote of confidence slash no confidence in the board with zero negative and zero abstaining. Cool. Okay. Well, thank you all.
I know. Thank you all. Thank you.
I believe, I believe there was also an additional motion from somebody.
Lynn Borton again. I would like to propose that there be, or I'll make a motion, that there be another special meeting of the members in the Thank you. Sometime in the summer. I'll defer to the board in terms of the timing. But my thinking is late July, early August so that there's enough time for substantial work to have been done, but also enough time to recruit whatever board candidates might be needed for election, understanding that you may or may not be able to do interim appointments in between. And you may want to explain to people what becomes of those people and how that works just so people understand that process. So that's the motion, that there is a special call meeting of the members in the summer. And its agenda is to revisit these same questions in confidence in the actions of the board and the plans going forward. Thank you. This is actually a really good point. This is why I didn't make the last motion. I can't actually make that motion, which is why I'm proposing it. So if someone would like to make that motion.
So moved.
Who said second first? Can you remind me of your name, sir?
Tom Shaw.
Tom?
Shaw. S-C-H-A-D.
S-C-H-A-D. Cool. Okay.
It works.
I have a technical question. At this moment, is there a representative of producers at the board?
That is next.
There is a question, is there a producer's representative on the board?
Okay. We need to hold another vote of the same qualifications from before. If anybody votes affirming the motion to hold another special meeting of the members in the summer, maybe in late July or early August, to revisit these questions and address the confidence in the actions of the board and plans for AIM going forward. Did I summarize that right? Cool. Any votes in the affirmative, please raise your hand in person or in the chat online, type affirmative.
And for this one, we only count the affirmatives. Because if they hit the 10% threshold, the meeting happens.
Okay. All right. Please raise your hands high. I have 30 votes in the affirmative. And then online?
I am seeing 1, 2, 3, 4. I'm seeing 1, 2, 3, 4 online.
Okay.
I also have someone asking, presenting a motion online? Steve Cordell moves that we have another special members meeting on May 29th, which is the timing of the next special meeting?
The timing, that May 29th will be the next quarterly board meeting. So you will, that will be the next opportunity to hang out with us again and hear your feedback and continue the discussion.
That meeting will be public.
Yes.
So are you willing to withdraw the motion, Steve Cordell?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Look at that. Thank you.
Great. With 30 votes in person and four online in the affirmative for that motion to hold another special meeting of the members in the summer, totaling 40 affirmative online, or in total, does that satisfy the requirement?
Yes.
Awesome. Fabulous. Great job, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We should we were going to have a conversation about multiple ways of getting involved. But I think, given that we have 15 minutes left, we should go straight to the producers' rep situation.
Let's do that and
And with any time remaining, talk about
Yeah.
Okay, so you've been asking questions for quite some time about a producers' rep. And I am thrilled to say that we absolutely want a producers' rep. And the way that that goes is the producers' representative serves as a two-way conduit between AIM producers and the AIM board. The producers' rep sits in on all board meetings as a non-voting member, bringing forward producer concerns and reporting back board actions. The producers' rep provides regular reports to the board, participates in all board activities and discussion as a non-voting member, and reports back to AIM producers on board actions. Producers' reps must be current AIM members and involved in producing video and/or audio content at AIM, given that that is a tenuous thing to be doing at the moment. If you have had a show that you have been producing, whether it, I don't know. What? Okay, sorry. Moving on. So also, the producers' rep is traditionally elected for a one-year term. And in this case, the term would expire at the annual meeting in October 2024. Candidates for the producers' rep may self-nominate here or be nominated by others. And nominations will be taken at this special meeting of members from the floor. To clarify on the must be involved in producing video and/or audio content at AIM, if you have a show that is on hiatus because AIM is on hiatus, you've been a producer, you're good to go. Yeah. Were there questions from people? Or we are taking floor nominations at this time.
Yes, come to the mic.
Could we just affirm, could we just affirm the person who was elected to that position a year and a half ago?
The question is, could we affirm the person who was elected to that position a year and a half ago?
The last person to hold that Yeah, the last person. Jennifer, I'm sorry, what is your last name again? Wait, what?
Will you come to the mic?
Yeah, please. Yes.
I'd like to nominate the person who was elected to the position two years ago. Jennifer Heimstra.
Is she here tonight?
No, she's online.
She is online.
I'd like to know if she accepts the nomination.
Jennifer, do you accept? You can talk to us. You can unmute.
Just as a heads up, I'm kind of also investigating becoming a board member. So I didn't want to kind of, I want to de-conflict on that aspect. I'm working with getting a company in Arlington to sponsor me, and that's already been lined up. So yeah, just that's where I sit.
So that is a no on the producers' rep nomination from Jennifer Heimstra, correct?
Yeah, at this time, though, I really, really appreciate it. And I would love to have stepped into that responsibility. But yeah, I've been encouraged to seek a board position.
Awesome. Other nominations?
Jackie Stephen, nominate Jeff Hoffman.
Hi, sir.
All right.
Is there a question? Are these other nominations that you're ready to give?
Yeah, I'm gonna self-nominate. Can you come to the mic?
Please.
I am. Jojo tells me I put on some weight in Portugal, so I've got to get a bit of exercise as well, with a little bit of trepidation. I'd like to self-nominate. I was the producers' rep for about a year or so when WERA first kicked off, and during that time, when I first did it, people said, oh, yeah, you're the conduit. You're the guy who goes to beat up the management on our behalf. And I said, no, 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 no. I used to work in industrial relations. I've quit that job. I'm the person who communicates back and forth, and so that's what I tried to do for a good year there and really make something of that role. And I think it's just such a key role at the moment. Happy if Jeff does it as well, but I already have my hand up too. So, you know, it's such a key role, because we've been talking about the lack of communication, and if that continues, and I hope it won't, and I don't think it will, we've got to kind of keep things moving in both directions. And despite the talk of transparency and communication, again, the only thing I've seen in the last couple of months has been when Arno called the meeting of the producers and we got together, and the producers took it on and had the energy to do it. And that's what we've got to do again. And I'm kind of very confident that the producers have got that energy and would be a voice for that.
Do you want to do a speech?
And you're, I'm so sorry, your name is Ken Avis, right?
That's it.
Fabulous. Okay. Other nominations? Steven?
Steven Maru, nominating Lucy Campbell.
I'm gonna be quiet.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Beversdorf, and I produce aging matters, both radio and TV. So I kind of wear both hats. So while I don't want to be a producers' rep myself, I would love to at least see some cohesiveness between the producers and the radio and the TV. We, you know, we hardly talked with each other before, and so I applaud the people who have already nominated themselves, but I would hope that whoever becomes the producers' rep would have the, would invite the input from both sides of the fence that AIM looks at.
Do you have someone to nominate?
I'm sorry?
Are you nominating someone?
No, I'm just making a comment. Yes. Yes.
Are there nominations online?
I am not seeing a nomination online. Someone is asking, is it permissible to ask a question about the producers' rep position? They ask why the producers' rep on the board is non-voting?
It's not in the bylaws as a voting position.
Is that, was there a follow-up after that?
There's no follow-up at this time.
Currently, we have nominations for Jeff Hoffman and Ken Avis. Are there any other nominations for the producers' rep? Okay.
So while you do the Google form, I'm gonna go through the other opportunities.
Perfect. Just fine.
I'm gonna do double duty for a minute.
You can have a Google form vote, and it will not just be hands. Don't you worry.
Yes. So as Claire mentioned earlier, we do have a number of vacant board seats. We cannot vote on board members tonight, but we can take nominations. It would be simpler, just from a time perspective, if you email us your nominations, just bod@arlingtonmedia.org. We'll begin kind of getting a list together of folks who are interested. From a bylaws perspective, my understanding is that we appoint board members during interim periods and that those appointments last until the next annual meeting. So board members that you nominate tonight, we would find the five that we need to fill seats on. We would, as a board, vote on their, becoming part of the board, and then at the annual meeting would be an opportunity for everybody to participate in board voting.
This will not be the only time that you are considering people, however, right?
No, not at all.
For the appointments?
Correct. And in...
This is just gathering ideas?
Yes. And in general, for board appointments, there's always going to be a need to have a slate of people who are interested. We never know when there's going to be a vacancy. So if you're interested, or you know of someone who's interested, always raise your hand. Don't wait until we announce a vacancy and then scramble. But that's the procedure for right now. We need to find five folks through October, and then we go through a formal process in October, which will appoint people to the groups that expire in '24, '25, and '26.
Just quickly, are you proposing a deadline on yourselves for filling these seats?
I had not thought about a deadline. We should, because we need help. So what is today? Today's like the 17th. I'd like nominations within the next week. While we have you here thinking about it, get some names in your mind, go home and send us an email. But if you like to chew on things, take the week. So next Wednesday will be the close of nomination period for the board appointments that we will make through the October annual meeting. Did you have a question?
Oh, yes.
Yes, call for nominations. Yes.
There will be a call for nominations email that gets sent out as ASAP as humanly possible.
Yes. And included in that will be a call for volunteerism. So there's a couple of places where we need urgent help from volunteers. I mentioned the fundraising. Bake sales would be great. Anything would be great, okay? Grants are going to take some time, as we've heard. We're not completely in compliance with our state corporation commission license, all these things. But anything will help. We are struggling with petty cash level purchases, so raising funds right now is going to be critical. So if you're interested in being a fundraising volunteer, also email bod@arlingtonmedia.org. Well, we're in the red $150,000, but... In the short term, we are looking at, what was the total we asked for in the stabilization plan? Do you remember? Okay. Let her find that number. It was...
What's the address again?
bod@arlingtonmedia.org. So let me get a number. Question?
So again, just to address what I had said before, so our organization is open to partnering and offering summer programming.
Yes.
The summer programming has always been a resource for the station, and also because the space actually exists, it could be utilized, and I think that would be very impressive to the county that you're doing something like that. The other thing I want to mention is that the...
If you're going to make a statement, can you please do it to the microphone?
Sure.
Because the people online can't hear you, and they are complaining.
Hello again, this is Miriam Janari with Sustainable Scoop. I believe the summer programming is an opportunity for Arlington Independent Media to make some money. Our organization is interested in partnering, as we have a, you know, fully formed and functioning nonprofit organization. So that's one option, and I also wanted to say that even without this space, Arlington Public Library is actually going to host the Arlington Weekly News on the 24th. So there are opportunities to continue to collaborate, but it's hard to ask people to contribute if they're not being offered anything, you know, to promote or be part of. So that's my thought there, and I really do hope that, you know, I wish we could get a vote on that.
Yes. Thank you. Do you want Claire to post?
Yes, go for the vote. Yeah, thank you.
So Kathy, the next, the slide for the producers' representative vote, the QR code in Bitly, if you would kindly display that.
Okay. Can I just say something really quick? I'm waiting to hear the next steps forward, which I know you're holding out on, but it's nine o'clock now. You know, I like to make sure we have what our plans are specifically for the resumption of audio broadcasts or even online broadcasts for WERA. Thanks.
I'm gonna really quick talk about some voting procedure things for the producers' rep role. So what you, what that QR code or that Bitly link will take you to is a Google form. That Google form asks for your name and your email, and if you vote for Jeff Hoffman, Ken Avis, to be the producers' rep until October 2024, or if you abstain, I will be, those votes go into a Google form that gets automatically tallied, and I will have, I will announce the results as soon as voting closes in a couple of minutes, once I've gotten to check that everybody's had the chance to vote. Question for Jackie?
Just a point of information for the members, you do not have to be a voting member to vote for producers' rep. At least you have not, never traditionally.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody, anyone can vote.
And does anyone have any questions online regarding voting?
There is a question, will a Zoom recording of this meeting be made available?
Yes. And the transcript is being generated as we speak as well, if that is something that people need.
To the question of the amount, I would put a stretch fundraising goal to cover our, what I would call petty cash subscriptions, things like that, at around $10,000.
Thank you.
Yep.
We're doing a lot of things concurrently right now, so I just want to say the voting is open for the producers' rep. I'll close voting in three minutes, if that sounds good. I've got the timer setting now. I'll tally those votes, and while the, while votes are being tallied, we'll continue with discussion.
To the questions of next steps, I'm gonna wait until the voting closes, so folks don't feel conflicted. There'll just be a couple of small things. My phone.
All lowercase? Shouldn't matter.
Wow!
So I got something at 11:00 this morning. So as far as I know, it was working. So now I'm questioning, but I'll keep an eye on it, see if it comes in.
You've got two minutes left for voting for the producers' rep for everyone here and online. I don't see a reason why not. Yep. Whisper in my ear.
You're whispering.
Your mic, just whisper in your phone, because my phone is not good. Are people responding in the chat with, or...
Oh, yeah.
Please, please, if you're online, please do fill out the Google form. That's where we will be tallying the votes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm one of those... It's okay. You're...
You are both a member and a board member. That's true. Arlingtonmedia.org is not working. Try staff@arlingtonmedia.org.
Could you repeat that email address so I can put it in the chat?
Staff@arlingtonmedia.org. Yeah, I got emails at both of those today.
I think so. Yeah, weird things just happen.
It's the internet.
Okay, that is time on voting for producers' rep.
Okay.
Please note that if you were online and you tried to submit your vote in the chat on Zoom, I am not counting those votes. I am tallying what is on the Google spreadsheet and what four people whispered in my ear. Okay. Tallying now, and if people want to discuss things.
Okay. Last volunteer need. Over the last few years, the organization became incredibly dependent on outside parties to manage the broadcast signal chain. So there is equipment and there are resources, but there isn't internal know-how about how to rebuild a signal path for television or radio. So I would like to see a group of volunteers who have some engineering experience, who can survey what we have, help determine two things. One, how do we go back to the traditional stuff, but in the meantime, how do we do some of the new stuff? There's no reason we can't do internet broadcast of radio or YouTube channels or any of the modern things under the AIM banner. But we need volunteers to come together and start strategizing on how to get those signals to air or to bits on the internet. So those are the two call-outs tonight. Fundraising and signal. Okay? Thank you. Yes, bod@arlingtonmedia.org or staff@arlingtonmedia.org.
Which does work. It was me.
Okay, it does work. Thank you.
The manner telling is...
Okay. I was a little worried, because, you know, who knows these days?
Okay. The results. Drum roll, please. For, yeah, sorry, for the producers' rep, we had votes for Jeff Hoffman, votes for Ken Avis, and votes for abstain, and the winner of the vote is Ken Avis as your producers' up until October 24th. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Close us out.
All right. Are there any more questions for the board? Thank you kindly. We really do appreciate it, and meet in a jar.